I'm moving it out there.
All right, welcome. It is five o'clock on Monday, March 6, 2023. This is a regular meeting of the Cape Girardee City Council. Thank you all for attending. We will begin with an invocation by Pastor Scott Johnson of Soval Harvest Ministries here in Cape Girardee, and then follow with the Pledge of Legions. If you want all, please join us in standing.
Amen. Let us pray. Dear God, with all humility, I stand before you, asking your presence on tonight forevermore. I lift up everyone that's here. I lift up all the families, and I say a special prayer over our council. I ask, Father, that you continue to keep your Spirit upon them, guide them, lead them, direct their paths, speak to their hearts. Continue to give them the willingness to make changes for the better. Continue to strengthen them, even at times as they try and find ways to help and do good for people that sometimes fight and come against them in spite of what they have to deal with behind closed doors. I lift up everyone in this room, Lord, asking you to give us all the willingness to be in a position to make a better way and a better change, because you said that if your people be on one accord, everything that we do is unimaginable. And I thank you for being so good to us in spite of all of the negativity that's going on. Let us continue to be those that fight for love and unity and peace and increase. And we are so grateful to give you all the honor and all the praise. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
All right, thank you. We have no study sessions tonight. We do have three presentations this evening. First, we will have a presentation by the Cape Girardee Chamber of Commerce and Director Rob Gilligan.
Mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to visit with you today to highlight a little bit the Cape Girardee Chamber of Commerce, a little bit over 100 years old, proud to serve the community and the region of Cape Girardee as partners and partners with the community. I'll start real quick and just kind of want to give you a roadmap of where I'm going to go tonight. I know that I'm one of three presentations plus a little bit of business activity. So I'll do my best to stay brief. Certainly will be happy to take any questions, but respect your time and the time of the business of the council this evening, as well as the audience here assembled. So the Cape Chamber really partners with the city of Cape Girardee in three distinct ways. And you've already kind of heard a little bit about two of those distinct ways. Brenda Newbern, who is the Director of Visit Cape, and our CVB presented to you in January about the work of Visit Cape. We partner with you in a capacity as administrative partner for that under contract to provide administrative managerial services for Visit Cape. So you already have a good picture of what Visit Cape does, the impact that they have in our community and our region, and really the success that we've seen over the last several years as we see more activity grow in tourism and business within the region. So you had that presentation in January. The second way that the Cape Chamber partners with the city of Cape Girardee, of course, is in our partnership through CMO Ready, formerly Magnet. That presentation was just last month to the commission, to the council, excuse me, and understand a little bit there. We're partners with you as co-investors in the CMO Ready organization and partnerships there in our regional economic development efforts, and especially those efforts we're doing to grow and expand those. So the third way that we partner with you is what I want to talk to you about tonight, and that's as members of the Cape Girardee Chamber of Commerce, which is city council, or sorry, the city of Cape Girardee has been for many, many years, and we certainly appreciate that. So I want to talk to you about that membership, what that means and what it looks like. So at your table, hopefully you have a copy of our 2002 kind of report, or 2022 report that just highlights a little bit about our membership, gives you a little bit of a recap of that activity. 2022, as the Cape Chamber will talk about, and as we'll talk about at the end of this month, at our annual dinner, was probably a year of transition and change for us. As you know, I'm new to the role, new to the community, right at 11 months now that I've been here in this role, following an executive director who'd been in that job for 28 years, who followed a president and CEO who'd been in that job for 27 years, and following somebody else that had been in that role for 31 years. So since 1961, I'm the fourth president and CEO of the Cape Chamber in continuity. So I don't know if that sets a golden roadmap, but it certainly sets a level of expectation for me to perform well. And so hopefully we'll start off well tonight. But you can see the type of activity that we had in 2022 during that year of transition and operations. Cape Chamber is proud to have roughly 800 business member organizations within our region. And I really emphasized the word region. While we certainly have the density of our membership here located in Cape Girardee, we have membership that covers southeast Missouri throughout the region, southern Illinois, even memberships that reach out into other area states, anybody that does business and activity within the region of southeast Missouri, and we want to be a conduit for that and a promotion of growth. Lots of different events. We see many of them, of course, 60 different ribbon cuttings, 61 different ribbon cuttings last year, 60 different events, 152 meetings that we hosted throughout the year, and some activity. Our team, of course, is made up of four individuals. It's a little bit smaller than it has been in the past as we kind of regroup and rebound and work on our new strategies and goals coming up. But that team, hopefully, you've all had a chance to meet them and interact with them in the past, are certainly here to serve our members in the community and certainly the city as well in our partnerships that we work with with you. Membership to the Chamber of Commerce and why people get involved is driven in a variety of ways. So of those 800 members, people choose to be a member of our organization for a variety of ways, and I want to highlight that because that's really how we talk about our membership and the way that we can serve the community. So a lot of times, people ask them a question, do you want to be involved in the chamber because you're looking for advocacy for business-related issues? The chamber can lead that capacity. Do you get involved in the chamber for involvement within your community, or you get involved for marketing and visibility for your business or organization? We break those down into kind of four different distinct business types or member types, I should say, that get involved in our community. Our business builders, they're ambassadors, they're appreciating our networking events and exposure to members and member news, activities like that. These are where you're going to see people that are starting or growing businesses that are wanting to build connections and really utilize the networking strategy and functions that chambers of commerce have served for over a century. Our business investors, right, are the ones that find value in doing events and activities that we can provide for their business that don't require heavy lifting. They're really busy running their organization, their business, and don't have the time to do all those extra things of communicating. So they utilize the membership in the Chamber of Commerce for connecting to the community in other ways and feeling connected through information, through opportunities like our business listings online, such as that. Our community builders are really our backbone of our membership. They're involved and enjoying serving on our committees, sponsoring events and activities, usually our larger businesses or organizations that are kind of core to the growth and the development of our community, and take that kind of leadership activity for the region related to the growth and activity of business and commerce, and their involvement in the chamber. And then, of course, our last group is our community investors. And these are really your community stakeholders, your large businesses, your large employers, key partners. This is kind of the category that city and local government oftentimes fits into. Your partnership with the chamber isn't that you get a business relationship directly out of being with the chamber, but it's about growing the community in the region and the partnership that we can play as community investors. So on a scale, when you look at that, there's a few different things that people will measure out. Participation, being on the right, our business builders and our community builders tend to be the ones that participate the most, attend our events and our functions, get engaged in a personal way with the Chamber of Commerce. Our community investors and our business investors are more partners, may not be as many First Friday coffees or as many ribbon cuttings, but they're looking for things. Our business investors and business builders are really transactional in the way engaged with us. They're really kind of a, it's a business transaction engagement for them. Whereas our community investors, such as the city, and our community builders are really aspirational. They're about the role the chamber can play to grow our community in our region. And so how does that all play in together to the city of Cape and your involvement? Well, it's the way that we partner with you to help promote the growth of Cape Girardee and really southeast Missouri. Our partnership with Visit Cape gives us an opportunity to serve as an administrative partner for the city, for a CVB. Our team works with the Visit Cape team to support efforts for activity and tourism by sharing talent and resources so that we can build up and kind of scale down when it's needed. And we also connect our business community and our membership with tourism activity to support growth and new revenue. We hope we have seen some success related to that as we've watched those tourism numbers increase over the last several years, and we see an uptick in that sales tax collection. This really kind of a firsthand indicator of how activity happens in those specific hospitality fields. From a development side, we collaborate with local government and businesses to partner on growth and development within the region, CMO Ready being a key indicator of that. We work to gather a common regional voice for advocacy at state and federal issues. A real quick thank to Council Member Thomas, Mayor Kinder, and Assistant Mr. Polley that joined us this past week as we went up to Jefferson City to speak with our legislators and our state leaders on behalf of the region. It was a great visit, a great opportunity. And then, of course, we serve as a connection to the business community for communication, feedback, and support. So as you're making decisions, as you're looking to enhance and grow and promote the community through the decisions a local city would do, we can help you be a conduit to the business community, be a communication tool to flow out to our members and the community and the region at large, be a sounding board for feedback, and be a partner to make the right decisions for us to grow. That's the role that the chamber plays, and that's why we appreciate the membership and the investment that the city continues to make as a partner with the Cape Chamber in all three of those simple categories. It's really kind of simple. It's really kind of basic. Chambers of Commerce have been around for literally hundreds of years. Many of you up there are already individual members of the chamber, whether you're through your businesses or as an individual member, and we certainly appreciate that activity. We'd welcome all of you to be a member, and we'd be happy to talk to you about that some other time. But that's really kind of the focus that I wanted to highlight to you tonight, recap any information, and answer any questions that you have. And if not, turn it over to probably much more important presentations you have this evening.
I have a few questions. I'm kind of looking at your stats list, and just, I got a few questions, but you have 9,041 job posting hits. Have any of the members or employers talked about how those hits equated to job opportunities, job positions, or those hits that you have?
Sure. So those, we host a job board on our website that all of our members can post any job openings that they have. And so they submit that on their own accord as they're open and available. It's kind of a rolling list of job opportunities. And so that's just our data of engagement from our website. So that page, our jobs, had 9,000 clicks over the course of 2022. Now, how that converted over to a higher rate or engagement rate, I couldn't give you a specific point on that. But I do know that most of the jobs that do get posted to us are, have been filled over time. They don't remain on our website as a significant way. You know, and I'll say, we're just one small piece of that, of that strategy that comes with job placement recruitment, you know, whether it's through job boards at CMO, through local workforce development boards, through local private entities that host them or things like that. This is just one other thing that we offer to our members.
Okay, another question I have. You mentioned CMO Ready on a couple occasions, which they did present last week. What do you see the chamber's role in relation with CMO Ready, and what efforts will you be able to lead with them or assist them in their efforts and make an impact in our area?
Sure. So the Cape Chamber of Commerce is a founding partner of what was formerly Magnet, is now CMO Ready. Just like the city of Cape, county of Cape, city of Jackson, and Scott City were original investors, so is the Cape Chamber. So we are a financial investor through our membership investments. We're a financial investor into CMO Ready on an annual basis. Secondly, we participate by a supportive agency, and really the exact same way that we partner with the city on Visit Cape. We can serve as a backbone for operational efforts as CMO Ready kind of gets its legs and strategies underneath it for its new plan. We provide that staffing resource for it. So currently, you know, where CMO Ready doesn't have any staff in place, as they're working on the plan before we go and hire new positions to fill those roles, I serve as the lead contact for any requests for proposals that we receive on industrial growth and recruitment. So the Missouri Partnership knows to reach out to me, and then I can work with our partners within the region to make sure that we can respond effectively to those RFIs. We work with businesses for business retention and recruitment in that role. And I see us staying in that partnership long term. It really kind of makes sense that the chamber kind of works in that leadership role when it comes to business advocacy and regional development efforts. CMO Ready will really lead our economic development and strategy innovation efforts. And then Visit Cape will really be that marketing wing talking about the opportunities that exist in southeast Missouri. And through that partnership, the three of us make a much stronger team as an organization. And then they, of course, co-locate in with our office space.
Do you see the chamber leading in this area and this region? And what vision does the chamber have to lead those efforts or make an economic impact in our community? Besides just gathering the numbers, what outcomes, what solutions that you have in place as it relates to your strategic plan, and how are those are measured in regards to making an impact in our community?
Sure. That's a great question. So we actually are just wrapping up our strategic planning processes organization. We focused and interviewed through our membership, through engagement, and one-on-one interviews and small group communications, and then through surveys of our members to collate the data of what are the driving factors for us as an organization to serve the community in the region. We have four objectives that we'll be working on over the course of the next three years. The first objective is the chamber is going to deploy strategies to support business growth and sustainability for our members in a broader region. Underneath that, we'll have certain goals related to technology enhancements, specifically focused on fiber deployment, which is one of the most critical pieces of business growth opportunities in the community and in the region. And it has to be in every neighborhood. It has to be accessible to everybody regardless of their economic capacity and opportunity. How can we support those efforts? How can we partner with opportunities to grow and expand that within the region will be a critical piece of our strategies over the next coming years. As we talk about our partnerships with CMO Ready and Visit Cape will be a critical piece of that objective as well. A second objective is to think and act differently on the enhancement of quality of life issues. Ultimately, when we talk about recruiting businesses and people to the region as we try and grow southeast Missouri, quality of life is a deciding factor that determines when people choose to make that leap or make that jump, whether it's an individual or a business. And so how can we help be partners within the region? And the first question is really defining what quality of life means, and then talking about what strategies we can leverage with our membership, our partners in the region to invest in quality of life activities, right? And that quality of life could be anything. It could be, you know, the things you think of from a retail activity or a shopping activity. Quality of life is the quality of education provided in the community. It's transportation access in the community. It's access to technology, as we talked about, and connectivity. It's public safety. You know, how can we be a voice and a partner within that effort? Our third area, our third objective, is to cultivate regional partnerships to build consensus within the region and be an advocate for the region. So we've begun that work by trying to work outside of the boundaries of Cape Girardee to partner with our peers in Jackson and in Scott City, and even work beyond that conversation to talk about how southeast Missouri can grow and prosper as a region. Other parts of the state do that very well. Southwest Missouri is a good example. Northwest Missouri is a good example. Of course, our urban areas, our metro areas do that very well. Southeast Missouri historically hasn't done that, and that's the message we've heard time and time again from Jeff City. And so our effort is how can we partner broader in the region to build a more regional strategy of communication advancement? And then our last area is going to be about building those collaborative partnerships for growth of people and talent. And that's through education partnerships, that's through training partnerships, and that's the recruitment efforts we talk about trying to grow the region. So that'll be our focus for the next three years.
Thank you.
Just a, oh, sorry. Oh, just a real quick question. So the one area that I've always found there's gray area in is which one of these organizations actually markets Cape Girardee to the outside world? You know, is that the chamber? Is that the CVB? Is that CMO Ready? So in your first year, where does that responsibility lie? Because talent retention and talent, you know, talent attraction is huge, especially to keep our workforce healthy. And so how do we market ourselves to the outside world as a great place to live, a great place to stay, a great place to be? And which organization does that fall into?
Sure. So I'm going to give you an answer that is a non-answer, and I recognize that, but I think it's important because it really depends on what the message we want to focus on, and then what that transition is. So in the ideal space, the way that we would do that messaging is Visit Cape would be marketing our region as a great place to come and visit, spend time, and explore, right? And then, once they make that communication, then it's a handoff so that the Cape Chamber can talk to those individuals to say, you've experienced southeast of Missouri and all it has to offer. Why don't you think about the opportunities that exist here? And we can talk about our business community. We can talk about job opportunities, and we can talk about investment opportunities within the region. And then that marketing then gets focused more on business development. That becomes CMO Ready's opportunity, where they talk specifically about business growth, business investment, and they market to that specific audience. And we partner with community partners like CMO or Mineral Area College to talk to youth about the opportunities that exist here for higher education. And then we partner with our business to talk about the opportunities that exist here for jobs. The one thing that we do know, and looking at communities that are successful, is the mission, the message has to be clear and specific when we invite. So we could buy ads all day long that say, there's lots of great jobs in south Missouri, southeast Missouri, and it's a great place to live. There's no catch or opportunity that gets them here, but specifically, if we can partner with our members, with our community partners, to say, what's the specific message and who's the specific audience we're targeting, then we can be the partner. So the answer is, there's not a specific agency that's going to be in charge of it. We just have to do better in working together to refine our messages and recruit.
So that's always been one of my issues, is that over the years, we really have missed out on some really incredible opportunities for us to pull population out of the major metropolitan areas, whether that be St. Louis, Memphis, anywhere. We need one organization that will market the community of Cape Girardee in case there's somebody that is looking for an opportunity to remote in from work, but likes the idea of having a lifestyle of no traffic, you know, likes the idea of being able to be on their four-wheeler 15 minutes after leaving work. And so if we can, if we need that organization that will push the positives of Cape Girardee to the outside world so that we can continue to attract talent, continue to keep our businesses healthy, and continue to get more and more people into the community to work. That's just one thing that I challenge you kind of over time is just to figure out who's the person in charge of that, because it's really easy to kind of pass it around to a whole bunch of different areas. But we need to figure out who is, who does that for us? Because we've missed opportunities over the years to actually market Cape Girardee as a Zoom town during COVID or other types of opportunities. We need somebody to be the speaking factor for us.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think it's important. But, you know, that's one where I specifically would say, that's where I'd go back to our first objective and goal that I talked about is, I think that we're certainly a community that'd be great for remote workers. The problem is, I can't guarantee that you can find a location right away that you can connect in with the fiber connectivity that's required to be a remote worker, right? I mean, we have businesses in town that allow remote work for their employees, and certain employees that live inside the city limits of Cape Girardee still have to go into the office because they can't access quality enough internet connectivity at their home inside the city limits that allows them work remotely three miles away, let alone 200 miles away to St. Louis or 1,200 miles away to either the coast, right? So it's a mix of both. We've got to be able to share that message, but we also have to have the infrastructure in place to back up that that message is true.
And I would add, there's an interesting, you know this better than anyone, Dan. I mean, CMO attracts thousands of people every year to our area. We know that some of them then leave, right? And so there are, you know, there are plenty of people coming, at least for a short time, getting trained. And then we have, you know, kids growing up here and then finding that they need to, you know, find a job elsewhere. So it's, you two, I'm sure would have a lot to talk for a long, long time.
Not the first time we've had this conversation.
Yeah, I bet.
Can I just add a couple things to it, just spitting off of what Deanna had to say? You know, we've gone through this whole rebranding idea for quite some time, especially since I've been on council, and I know that's a big deal for you, Dan. And it's interesting how you say, what is Cape Girardee? You say it's a great place to visit, spend time and explore. But from the city's perspective, you know, what is the definition of Cape Girardee? Are we a regional hub? I think just merging these ideas so that we, we're not all speaking on, you know, sort of different ends of the spectrum. We need to give a clear definition of what Cape Girardians are, or who Cape Girardians are, and what you're going to find here, and what type of lifestyle you're going to have. So it's not necessarily marketing to what exists now, but what are we marketing towards 10 years from now, right? We're not looking at what we have now. This is, this is a wide-range, forward-thinking idea, and it's been something that I know Magnet has been working on, and I appreciate all the work that you're doing. I think we would all love to be, continue to be included on the conversations so that we can throw out some ideas. We have some great ideas from our citizens that consistently come forward and share their perspectives and ideas. But just defining who we are is probably the most important aspect of this.
I'm curious if you and your experience and Dr. Haskin and your previous places, if you've, if you've been involved in a kind of a community-wide, you know, multi-organizational process like that, like Shannon was talking about, if that's a, you know, with Magnet, with CMO, with the city, with the region partners, the chambers, and the, you know, if that's something we need to have as a goal.
Yeah, and I don't think it's a unique conversation that communities all over the country aren't having the exact same conversation right now. And I would argue, and this was a conversation I had with the search committee literally a year ago, when I was, you know, in the final stages of taking on this role, is that organizations, communities, and everybody evolve over time. Chambers of Commerce have evolved over time, and the role that they play, I think the chambers are right now in a new evolution. The ones that want to lead in their community step further into this role of being partners in the community and collaborators, instead of kind of sole operators and, you know, maybe kingmakers that maybe a Chamber of Commerce played, you know, 40 or 50 years ago. Now, instead, it's about utilizing those partnerships with our key partners in the community, whether it's CMO Ready or Visit Cape. Old Town Cape's up pretty soon. They're a key partner to us because they're, you know, influential and important about the quality of life development, our business community, of course, our profits there. And so having those conversations are critical, but then defining what the audience we want to talk to is. Because, you know, that's the other piece of the puzzle, is identifying what your message or your brand is, is critical about who your audience is and what the message you're trying to say is. You know, and recognizing that brands not determined by what you want it to be. Your brand's created by what others perceive you to be. And so if we aren't perceived as a, you know, forward-thinking community, we can't tell everybody that's what we want to be and do that. We have to make the actions to change the perception to create that brand. But I think that that's a great exercise that we should all do as a community in collaboration.
Did you have?
Yeah. Mayor, you know, the community I came from, it was a lot more complicated because you had, you know, two states that were actually partnering together to try to make things happen, and southwest Arkansas partnered with northeast Texas. And you had both state governments entrenched. They were really, really engaged and involved in that process. One thing that we did was make sure that we have to understand exactly what our role was going to be in the future. And that was, for us in that region, was advanced manufacturing, that that's what we focused on. And that's, you know, what we spent most of our resources trying to attract. Obviously, they've been very successful at doing that over the past 10 to 15, 20 years. But that's who we defined ourselves as, an advanced manufacturing community, and the community bought in, in both southwest Arkansas and northeast Texas.
Thank you. Anybody else? Questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Gilligan. That was a lot. Appreciate it.
Appreciate the time.
Right. Next, we have a presentation by the United Way and First Call for Help. And we have several people here to present. Please let us know who you are.
I'm Elizabeth Shelton, Executive Director of United Way of southeast Missouri, and I want to thank you all very much for giving us this opportunity to come and talk about a very important program that United Way funds, and that also has a big impact in this community, especially in Cape Girardee. I've brought with me Denise Wimp, the Director of First Call for Help, who has been in this position for more than 20 years. And she has some information to share with you.
Sure.
Thank you all very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Sorry. You have a packet, I believe, that was given to you with just some information in there. I'm going to go over some of it briefly. It's been, it has been 20 plus years, so I have a lot of stuff, but I just won't spend that much time on it. So what you have in front of you, just a little bit of history that we actually began in 1999. There was a two-year development process that took place before that that did involve the city of Cape Girardeau in bringing First Call for Help to this area. And it's designed, it's a free telephone helpline for people to call in. We keep a database of all the social service agencies and nonprofit organizations in a five county area. We keep track of what services they provide, how they help people, where they're at, what do they do, basic eligibility requirements? And then each month, we try to keep track of those places, who's got money for what things for that month. So it gets a little tricky on that end of trying to keep track of all that. The mission is just to enhance the Southeast Missouri community's capacity to connect people in need with the appropriate resources through collection, organization and dissemination of information. And that just sounds, you know, really, you know, cut and dry, very, you just say what you need to say and you get off the phone. And that's not exactly how it goes. I'll address that in a minute. So we do try to keep our database up to date. I keep track monthly who has money for what things. Our helpline is available. We also have a website, firstcallforhelpcmo.org. On that website is the searchable database where people can go online and search themselves for resources. And then one of the things that we that we do through this is providing this assistance. It's not only just for clients, it's also for any professionals that need to call other social service agencies, church members, anything like that, anybody can call. The combination of database and helpline is not provided by any other local government or organization in our area. So we originally started covering just Cape Girardeau County. And then we expanded pretty quickly into Scott, Stoddard, Bowlinger and Perry. Once the word got out that there was a helpline that people could call, those were the areas that we started seeing the most amount of calls come from. But on average, 65% of our clients served our citizens of Cape Girardeau. And that's just been the biggest area that we received calls from. The main needs that we see are financial needs. Of those needs, it's electric bills, rent and water bills. Those are the top three under financial assistance. After that is medicine. Those are the main things that we see. With the water bill assistance, we've established a working relationship with the folks over in the water office. And having First Call for Help gives the staff in the water office a place to refer people to. When they call into the water office, I need, I can't pay my water bill, I'm behind, I need an extension, whatever the situation happens to be. That having First Call for Help gives the staff a place to refer people to so that they can make one phone call, explain their situation one time and find out what resources are available through that one phone call. And so then when we are able to work with folks, we know what resources are available. We get those folks help with with the water bill, helps the city maintain water service and have the bills paid for clients. And then under funding, the city of Cape has been very gracious and very wonderful to us from the very beginning. The city has supplied for our budget $2,500 a year. We do get additional grants from other places. Those are listed down under the budget. You can see City of Cape, City of Jackson, Cape County, one of our local churches, and then the United Way does provide the largest amount of funding there. Excuse me. We did notice during the pandemic, we did see an increase of calls. All social service agencies saw an increase in everything. One of the things that we saw, the folks that were in the most, most, well, that that had some really great needs during that time was a population that we had never addressed before. It's the population that lives just above the poverty guidelines, those government poverty guidelines that you have to fit squarely into to get any resources. During the pandemic, we noticed there's a layer of people just above those that are one paycheck away from crisis and poverty. And that's the population we started seeing the most from during that time because these are folks that typically can make it as long as they have a paycheck. But when things start happening as they did during the pandemic, those are folks that found themselves right in the middle of the crisis with everybody else. They had never faced this before. They didn't know where to go, who to talk to, what resources were available. And that's where the helpline came in to be very beneficial to those folks. They had one place that they could call, explain their story one time, talk to a professional and get connected to resources. And so as under the, under the budget part, the city of Cape Girardeau contributes 3.63% of that is that $2,500 to help 65% of those served. So 65% of our calls do come from Cape Girardeau residents. And so you've seen our request to increase our funding to try to help us continue to run the helpline and make sure that it's available. The next sheet that you have then is a flow chart. And I always try to make sure, I won't spend a lot of time here because I know it's busy, but I love what I do. It's more than just people calling and saying, hey, I need a list of food pantries. Okay, here's the list. Thank you. Goodbye. That's not what we do. If somebody calls me and they need assistance with food, the very first question I ask them is, do you have food for today? You would be surprised how many people tell me, well, not really. So that's the very first question I ask them to make sure they get what they need today. And then I'm going to make sure they get what they need for tomorrow and for the future. So we do an assessment. So the very first thing, the call comes in from the client or it comes from an agency, another social worker calls me from another agency, do an assessment. It's just a, it's just a list of questions. It's not fired off. It's a conversational type situation. I need to know the ages of the people in the household. Is anybody disabled? Is anybody currently pregnant? Is anybody a veteran? Is anybody employed? So during, during that assessment, we, the client's going to identify for you the main need. I need help with food or I need help with my bills. They're going to identify that for you. As you're talking to them, you start to identify other needs. Maybe they're behind on their water bill because they lost a job. Would you like help trying to find the next job? Let me help you with that as well. Here's the resources for the water bill. Here's the resources to help you find another job. Because that's all in the database and I can get that information to them. It can be simply information. Oh, somebody's new to town and they don't know where someplace is, you know, the food stamp office. So I can give them that information. And then the next one would be information and referral. I need assistance with food. One of our local churches puts together a great food pantry calendar that's available. I can email that to you. I can tell you where it's at in the community and make sure you get that information and referral. Case assistance, then you'll see next. That is where a large bulk of the work comes in that people don't necessarily realize happens through the helpline. There are some client stories that are the last page of your packet that will explain that a little more in detail. But like I said, when somebody calls in and they need help with one thing, I'm going to find out what led you to be in need of that one thing. And let's see how we can address that. Sometimes somebody needs assistance. I'll throw out an electric bill because that tends to be a big one as well. But sometimes the electric bills get really high. It's more than one place can handle. So I'm going to work with them because there may be two or three different places that can pitch in on the one bill. But somebody has to make the calls. Somebody has to verify that information for the funders that are providing the money. Somebody has to get the permission, the release of information to give account numbers out. I handle all those things to make sure that everything, if it's piecemealed, that it's all together. None of our organizations want to put $100 towards an $800 electric bill and the electric bills still get turned off. So we coordinate all that to make sure that we've accumulated the total amount before any pledges are made on that account. So it becomes quite a process of coordinating multiple resources for folks. Sometimes we keep a service waiting list. A lot of times I do that at Christmas. People, maybe they missed the sign up for any of the Christmas assistance programs, but then new things sometimes will just pop up here and there and I'll keep track of those. And if people tell me they've missed the list or the signups, I keep their name and phone number. If something new pops up, then I'll call people back and just let them know, here's, here's something else. Donation coordination, if people want to donate things, I'm always happy to try to help them find appropriate places for them to donate things, explain how processes work and how their donations make a big difference in our community. And like I said, the very last page is a couple of success stories or client stories for you guys to read when you have a moment to kind of see exactly how the program works, how coordinating things work and how the assessment actually highlights things that can actually provide more long-term assistance for folks. So I'll stop. I have, like I said, 20 years of stuff I could talk about. Does anybody have any questions?
I wanted to clarify too first that, you know, we sent a letter to all of you a month or two ago. And you'll notice that this amount that we're asking for is less than that once we did further calculations. So we felt like asking for a greater contribution toward the First Call for Help budget, considering the amount of calls that are coming in from Cape Girardeau was justified. But it's a little less than what we had asked for in that first letter.
Yeah, I had a question. Have you asked for any increased funding from City of Jackson or other partners?
I have in years past, yes.
Are you going to this time?
Yes, we actually have a process lined out for this calendar year to look for additional funds to increase wherever we can. So yes, sir, that is on the agenda for this year.
And just to be clear, your funding does, is not given to someone in need?
Correct.
Right. Your, your your budget is, is for you all to operate as a source.
Yes.
Not a financial source, but an informational source.
Right. It's all operational.
So what specifically with the increase, what specifically, what specific things you need that are operational that you need? It's almost like a 13 to 14% increase. What specific things that you will need for that amount that you're asking for?
So one of the things that we're looking at is number one, reducing the amount that the United Way puts in towards our program. The other thing we're wanting to look at is I am a one-person show covering five counties. So I do want to look into expanding a little bit, maybe bringing on another person, maybe bringing on a part-time person with a laptop that can go to food pantries, that can go to events in the community, can go to, that's not Project Homeless Connect. I just lost the name. Project Hope, thank you. They changed the name on me. Can go and be in those places and be directly in front of people who need the assistance the most. So those are some of the things that we're looking at. We've had staff in the past. Grants come and go and they've gone right now. So we're looking at being able to continue the service and grow it a little bit so that we can reach more people.
Okay. Another question I have, and I appreciate your work, Denise. I've known you for a long time. And so it takes a lot of passion to do it for so many years. But the other question I have, since you work with so many of the organizations to be helpful, to help people in the community, have any other, a lot of them are grant writers. Have any other organizations come, put you in their line item budget to say, hey, we've been working to help them. Have you ever tried that approach or? Or has it been offered?
Okay, I kind of, I talked to one particular organization of, you know, when you refer people to us, you know, can we be in there? And some people say yes, some people say no. It's not ever really officially happened. And I, maybe I don't push. I don't know.
You keep answering the phone, Denise, is the problem. It's not a problem. Sorry.
Thank you. So yeah, thank you for that. Yeah. Any other questions for us? Thank you all very much for your time. I appreciate it.
This has been very informational. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciated the, you have the brochure with you as well. It has the phone number if you have questions. There's an email on there. Feel free to call, email. I'm happy to answer anything that may come up later.
A strong community needs a strong United Way. And we and many of our partners were hit during COVID financially, also as well as volunteers. And we are asking all of our partners in our workplaces, our donors, everyone to step up if you can because calls and needs for services from the United Way network were as, the increase was as much as 300% during times, at certain times during the COVID pandemic. And our funds were not increased by 300%. So we are very dependent and eager to get more support in every way. We ask everyone to give, advocate, volunteer. And First Call for Help is a program that is critical to this community. And United Way needs some more support to continue funding this program and also to be able to make it even more effective than it is.
You stated that your organization is the only one that's, that's kind of, what's a good word for it? Kind of corralling all the information. Is so much of your work, is it just educational to people who call, they're calling in a desperate moment? But would you say they, they end up, is the goal for them to learn a whole lot more about what?
That would be one of the goals. Yes. You know, to meet the need, find the resources for the need and then to increase the knowledge that they have in the community to know that there may be other resources. And if employment is an issue, maybe they don't know the employment services that are available. Maybe they don't know about the, the city transit. A lot of people don't realize we have a fixed bus route system and don't know how to get from point A to point B. When you explain that to them, it, it solves a lot of things for folks when they know that that system is there. So yes, educating them on the community that's around them is another piece that we do.
Another thing to keep in mind is as healthcare is evolving, I'm sure you've reached out to our local healthcare leaders some, but you know, with, from the national level, federal level down to the state level, there's this focus on the fact that 90% of things that affect people's health is outside of the walls of the hospital. And it's these social determinants of health and all of these aspects. So CMS and reimbursers are reimbursing such services and such as this, you know, as for monitored populations. And so being able to partner with those healthcare systems that are trying to build this out. I mean, you're building a repository or you have it already built from 20 years of experience. So that might be a key partnership opportunity as well.
And we, and we do need to work forward on that. Both, both hospitals were involved at the very beginning of bringing this here. And, you know, did support us over some years. I've worked very closely with the social work departments at both hospitals when they have folks that have issues. So we do plan to this year, look a little more into, could they actually maybe provide some additional funding based on that? So yeah, those social determinants of health, you're starting to hear those words and that terminology in our local health field. So I'm hoping that we'll make that connection with them.
Well, their payment is being affected by it. So that's why they're.
Right. Right. Absolutely.
And one other thing, the city does not, the United Way is only a contracted partner through this, this specific
Right.
program.
Right.
Right. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to.
In other words, the city does not fund any other United Way
Right.
programs or operating expenses.
Right.
Just First Call for Help.
Any other question?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
All right. Last presentation is one from Old Town Cape regarding the Broadway Theater.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this evening. We really appreciate your time. I'm Liz Haynes, Executive Director of Old Town Cape. And with me this evening is Brennan Tote, who is owner of Tote Roofing, as well as Dr. Steve Hoffman, Coordinator of the Historic Preservation Program at Southeast Missouri State University. I also wanted to take a few moments to acknowledge some folks in the audience with us here this evening, including Bill Cole, our Board President and Owner of Edge Realty. In addition, Brennan Newbern also serves ex officio on our board and she is, of course, Executive Director of Visit Cape. We also have members of Old Town Cape's four committees with us here this evening. We also have Old Town Cape additional staff present. In addition, we have members of the Historic Preservation Commission and as well, members of the Broadway Theater Foundation Board of Directors. Old Town Cape does economic development. As you can see by these numbers in front of you, downtown Cape Girardeau is thriving. Despite the challenges these past few years have presented, we saw nearly $10 million invested in our downtown in 2022 alone. 23 new businesses within our 130 block district, which created 62 new jobs. 57 events were facilitated in our downtown by Old Town Cape just in 2022 alone, which filled our restaurants, our hotels and our retailers. Record traffic and revenue was seen within the past few years at locally owned brick and mortars in the heart of our community, including multi-generational businesses. I would like to bring special attention to the last bullet point on the slide. The health of a downtown is indicative of the health of the entire community. I really appreciated what Rob said earlier. I really appreciated what Rob said earlier. We are the regional hub of Southeast Missouri. It is our responsibility and our duty as regional leaders to utilize our resources effectively and make the big picture, forward-thinking, solutions-oriented decisions that will ensure our region continues to thrive for years, decades, and centuries to come. So why are we here? We are all aware that the demolition process for the Broadway Theater has begun. We are also well aware that there is a sense of fatigue and impatience surrounding the theater. But we are here today because we are thrilled that we have an outstanding viable alternative to demolition. And we are also aware that our ordinance allows for the ability to repair or demolish. And stabilization of the Broadway Theater is possible and will very quickly and cost-effectively not only save an iconic building in our downtown, but address the concerns identified by the city that the theater is an eyesore, and it is, and a safety hazard, which it is. Thus, we are asking the City Council to direct the city staff to consider alternatives other than demolition to address the problems identified for the Broadway Theater. So we have two decisions before us: stabilization, demolition. We are going to talk to you this evening about why stabilization is the right choice for our community. Number one, stabilization is the best use of city resources and taxpayer money. After several representatives toured the property recently, we ultimately received just two demolition bids. One is a non-local company, Door and Associates, whose bid was $471,200. And the second was a local company, Strack Excavating, whose bid was $293,743. The projected stabilization cost is $125,000 to $150,000. And number two, stabilization solves the problem of the blighted building and transforms this property into a revenue generating property for the city of Cape Girardeau. Big picture, forward-thinking, solutions-oriented, sustainable. So why Brennan and why now? Because Brennan has the resources, the time, the passion for redevelopment, a demonstrated track record, and a willingness to invest in our downtown community. These photos don't lie. Just a short time ago, there was a complete absence of activity in the River and Rails Building, which is located in the heart of our downtown community. Brennan transformed a blighted building that was being used for storage, and it had become an eyesore, into a revenue generating, beautiful addition to our community. Brennan Tote, who has been in construction his entire life, as well as Dr. Hoffman, the Coordinator of the Historic Preservation Program at the university, are both in agreement that when Brennan acquired this property, the River and Rails Building, it was in worse shape than the Broadway Theater is today. Now, I'm going to hand it over to Brennan. So he's going to dig into the specifics on his proposed project for you.
Well, thank you Liz very much. And thank you, City Council, for taking some time to hear these comments. Of course, I come before you with a passion for development and a passion for downtown from childhood. I used to go with my family downtown and enjoy the shops. And nothing has changed, even as I've grown up. I love the downtown and I've always wanted to develop properties there. And after the success of the River and Rails development, lit a fire in my heart to continue doing that downtown. The Broadway Theater, I have walked every square foot of the Broadway Theater multiple times. I've crawled up in the attic and I've inspected the trusses, the big steel girder trusses. And I've seen the 12-inch thick brick walls. And I marvel at the structure itself and how massive it is and how well-built it is. So I do fully intend, and I am prepared to take ownership of the theater. And I look forward to working with city staff to determine the best path, whether that is planned development or another mechanism to help restore this iconic landmark in downtown Cape. So we are here to propose that very idea of the stabilization of the theater. And the stabilization would include what you see on the slide before you, that we would first and foremost stabilize and secure the storefront of the building. This would include restoring the structural integrity of the part of the building that is falling away. This also includes restoring the aesthetically pleasing appearance and would ultimately help us to build public anticipation for a development that is happening in this building and for future improvements. So let's go into some of the nuts and bolts of this stabilization that we are proposing. We anticipate that the stabilization phase would take 60 days. And what that would include is prepping five units for eventual white box so that they could generate tax income and an associated cost of $125,000 to $150,000. My goal with this project is first and foremost to stabilize as quickly as possible and remove this as a safety concern for the, from the city's perspective. And I contend that I will be able to achieve that faster than the demolition process will. And if given the opportunity, when stabilized and once it is completed, it will allow me as a developer to invest my capital into a phased plan that will bring this building back to service to the community. And I have the financial commitment in place to do just that. If you will, I'd like to elaborate now on what those phased development would look like. So once the stabilization was complete, we move into Phase One. That is the front building restoration. This is done with private funding and it is a buildout of three storefront retail spaces on the street level, as well as two upper-level residential spaces. These spaces will be up, upper-end, high-end with rooftop access. And of course, they will include modern amenities that will make these certainly a desirable property for residential tenants. We're going to retain the historic elements of the building structure and will restore the classic marquee signage. And we feel like this project timeline will be about eight to 12 months. Once Phase One is stabilized, we will move into Phase Two. Of course, this is also privately funded. You might remember the old theater, the curtain, the big curtain would draw up into the ceiling. Well, that was of course, the fly house. And what we'll do, as we, as we see here pictured, we will take the, take the fly house that once serviced the theater and turn it into eight apartments. These two will be trendy, upscale, high-end apartments with views of downtown. And they'll have rooftop entertainment space. And they'll be within walking distance to modern amenities. So we plan to do Phase Two over a 12-month timeframe. Once Phase Two is complete and stabilized, then our teams will move into Phase Three. Of course, similarly, this is privately funded and this is the theater auditorium conversion. But we will convert one space into a smaller theater venue. So we will still maintain a theater presence in downtown Cape. And we already have some interest in that space on a long-term lease plan. A tenant is interested in renting it to have live performances. With that shrunken space, it's going to allow us to make this building more mixed use. We'll include three additional storefront retail spaces that face the Ellis Street side there and five additional theater-themed luxury apartments in the upper level. This being the biggest phase, we anticipate that it will take 20 months to complete. When Phase Three is completed, we will have returned every square footage of this building, this robust landmark theater, to serviceable use to the community. I thank you for taking the time to consider the benefits of stabilizing the Broadway Theater as an alternative to demolition. And I'm going to give attention now to Dr. Hoffman. And he is going to share with you the details that speak to the practicality of the proposal.
Thank you Brennan, and thank you council members. So this proposal to explore rehabilitation rather than demolition of the Broadway Theater aligns well with Cape Girardeau's strategic plans, Cape Vision 2040 and the Downtown Strategic Plan. The City Council identified their top goal, goal number one, to be to enhance our regional position in economic development and identified two ways, or among the ways, two were downtown improvement and tourism expansion. In the chapter on social and cultural vibrancy, the planners went into a more specific detail. And they noted, and here I'm quoting, "Cape Girardeau's historic buildings and districts are some of the city's most important assets. They attract tourists to the city, provide walkable neighborhoods for residents to live in, and when rehabilitated, help create a variety of housing options for Cape's residents." As part of the community engagement process, the residents made it clear that they chose the retrofit and redevelopment approach as the way forward for development in the city and noted that historic preservation would play a significant role in the application of that approach. In that same chapter, talking about the social and cultural vibrancy, the planners noted that throughout the community engagement process, residents expressed the desire to preserve and improve older buildings, especially those with historic or architectural significance, buildings like the Broadway Theater. They also noted that the city should encourage rehabilitation and renovation of existing commercial buildings. They should amend local laws to provide flexibility when working with older buildings and that they should make historic preservation a priority. The Downtown Strategic Plan emphasizes housing as an important priority. And the planners in coming up with the Downtown Strategic Plan update noted that despite having made considerable progress, some next steps are required for the community to realize many of its goals and objectives. And one of those goals is to increase investment in the area, particularly residential development. And they were talking about the kind of residential development that is associated with the project that Brennan has outlined. And they noted that the opportunity for downtown Cape is to take advantage of the pent-up demand for smaller format housing types in a historic, walkable, amenity-filled environment, such as the Broadway Theater. And so this project just makes sense on so many levels. As we discussed, it saves the city money in addressing the safety concerns, which are real, of the Broadway Theater. And it does so in a way that would happen more quickly than with demolition. It returns money to the city in the form of sales tax revenue. Conservative estimates from a recent TIF application suggest that a retail space will generate at least $755 per year in sales tax. And so with six retail spaces, we can expect to generate at least $4,500 in sales taxes per year, which happens every year and will most likely go up. And so eventually, this becomes a return on the city's investment. Additional downtown housing contributes to the vibrancy and economic vitality of both the Broadway corridor, the downtown district, and the city as a whole. And it's not just having more people out and about and, you know, engaging in the activities and amenities, enjoying the rooftop venues and whatnot. But the economic impact of downtown housing is tremendous. Estimates suggest that if you have a couple who are paying about $950 in rent a month, that they spend a little over $40,000 on goods and services. Now, that $40,000 isn't going to be spent on Broadway, but a chunk of it is going to be spent in the downtown district, you know, within the area that they live. And certainly, a good chunk of that is going to be spent in the city as a whole. And so there are just countless ways in which this makes a lot of sense. And it's a project that has a lot of community support. And I'm going to turn it back over to Liz to talk about that.
Thank you, Steve. As Steve said, it is vitally important that stakeholders, key stakeholders are on board with this proposal. Suzanne Hightower, Executive Director of the Broadway Theater Foundation, current owner of the building through the foundation and owner of the adjacent property to the building, which is now Speakeasy Coffee with Apartments Above, is with us here this evening. And I have a letter here with me that states, and I quote, "We fully support allowing Brennan to acquire the Broadway Theater from the Cape Broadway Theater Foundation as soon as he would like to do so." She goes on to illustrate that, why the board is thrilled to have the building preserved for a multitude of reasons. And I am more than happy to provide a copy of this letter to anyone who would like to see it. In addition, I also have with me a petition to save the Broadway Theater, signed by 879 members of our community. And I'm also happy to provide those to anyone who would like to see them. We presented this project to the Historic Preservation Commission on February 15th, and we received unanimous support. And of course, Old Town Cape's Board of Directors is unanimously in support of the project. I also want to elaborate, as Brennan already did, that he does have the financial backing in place for this project. And finally, I would like to share with you a video from Danny Essner, who many of you know. He's a retired Executive Vice President of Southern Bank. He's a former City Council member. And he's a current Old Town Cape Board Member. He's out of the country. He hated to miss this this evening. But it was very important to him to share his support of this project with all of you. So we have a video to share.
Good evening, American, your members. Most of you know that I have a passion for that pitch rod. I'm really, really passionate about downtown Cape. I truly believe that our downtown represents the heartbeat of our community. It is in that pitch rod in the eyes of the people who visit us from downtown. We would not have an historic downtown without the many historic buildings that are located there. We have been forced to have to reserve most of these buildings. And when one is lost, it can never be replaced. The Broadway Theater is one of our most iconic buildings in the midst of tragedy, to lose it. Saving it has definitely been a challenge. It took a visionary like Brennan Cole to think out of the box and create a use for Broadway that is economically viable. As a part of commercial realistic endeavor, I know it is critical for developing older buildings to be able to generate positive cash flow. And believe that Brennan's game plan will do this. Brennan is not only an experienced developer, he is also a building contractor who is capable of determining what it would realistically take to repair and preserve this building. Kudos to Brennan for his willingness to tap into this project. And kudos to the group of Broadway believers who refuse to give up, including Suzanne Hightower, Steve Hoffman, and Liz Haynes. The proposed project is exponentially extensive. It will preserve one of Cape's most iconic buildings for future generations. I strongly encourage our council to vote yes.
So again, thank you so very much for the opportunity to present this evening. We hope that you feel moved as City Council members to ask the staff to consider the alternative to demolition, which is stabilization of the Broadway Theater, which would allow for Brennan's three-phased rehabilitation project for the Broadway Theater. And at this time, if we have time, we're open to questions.
I will say right off the bat, Ms. Suzanne Hightower did register to speak tonight on something not on the agenda. And she indicated it was the Broadway Theater. So I think now would be an appropriate time if she's wishing to still speak, to do that now.
Yes, so I know this wonderful group of people probably said most what needed to be said. But I just want to say that we fully support Brennan as the board. All four board members fully support this project and think it's going to be a great option for the theater. And when you're talking about what is going to attract people to stay in Cape and live in Cape, that might be remote workers, it's going to be the culture. It's going to be the old buildings that have the apartments in the fly. It's going to be, you know, we have bars, we have smoke shops, we have restaurants. But what do we have for them to do while they're here? Especially if they want to live in downtown Cape. And so you're going to need small playhouses. You're going to need other recreational things that people want to do when they live downtown, like they do in the city. And this is just a great opportunity to be able to provide a small playhouse along with a viable economic building that's going to help with Cape. And when, you know, I've got the opportunity to travel to Europe and walk the downtowns in Companesdale and Santiago de Companesdale. And my son got to live there, live on the cobbled streets in a building that was built in 1600 and walk to the markets and walk to, everything was within walkable distance. And that is the charm of Europe. When I came here, I'm not from Cape Girardeau. I saw the downtown, and that was about 15 years ago. So it wasn't like it is today. And I looked at it and I said, oh my goodness, this could be such a phenomenal. And I looked at it and I said, oh my goodness, this could be such a phenomenal place, such a phenomenal downtown. And you see, it's the history, it's the buildings, it's the story that's going to bring people to live here. And I, you know, I think it's really important to save this iconic structure, which was a huge community structure in the 20s. And you have pictures where people were parked in front of there and crowded around there, and they had cooking shows and vaudeville acts. And they had the circus come in where elephants were actually on that stage. You can imagine how well that building is built for them to hold that. And it is, it's an iconic park of Cape. It could be a current iconic part of Cape. And we fully support it, and I just wanted to talk about that a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I just have a quick question. The words that were used during the presentation were that Mr. Tote would acquire the Broadway Theater. Can you define what acquire is?
To purchase.
All right, and this is a question for Brennan. Oh, sorry, did I cut you off?
No, I have some follow-up questions. I think the plan and the design looks fantastic and amazing. I understand that this is not something that can happen, you know, right away, that the plan would be for the whole project to be completed about 2026, 2027? Is that kind of the timeframe and there?
Yes, so with the first phase, beyond stabilization, of course, the first phase, if it were to take a year, the second phase taking an additional 12 months, and then the third taking maybe 20 months. So, yeah, we're looking at a total of 44 months or so. And that could, you know, that could easily span four years for the full development.
Right, but the primary concern would be the frontage, so that should be completed within a year.
That's correct.
Okay.
So what you're asking on the stabilization is if the city provide the funding to stabilize the building, is that correct?
So what we're asking tonight is for the city council to authorize city staff to explore options other than demolition. Because right now, it's on a path to demolition. And so we think that there's an alternative. And so then city staff would engage with Brennan to figure out, well, what's the best way to do that? And yes, you know, the short of it is, we're saying, instead of spending $300,000 to $400,000 to demolish it, you could use the repair option in the ordinance and for $125,000 to $150,000, remove the dangerous conditions and the blighted conditions. And then that would set it up for future development. And so, yes, there would be some city involvement in this.
But a follow-up to that is, are you asking that the city provide the funding to Mr. Tote to do the stabilization? Or would you be asking the city to handle all that?
I think that it would be kind of worked out with city staff. But given, you know, city staff's expertise and capacity for work, I would imagine that they would want to contract with Brennan to do that. And he's fully prepared to do that.
I guess ultimately, what you're saying is that has to be hashed out. You know, like that's a specifics. Right now, you can't even have those conversations because staff is directed to only demolish.
Correct.
But by ordinance, we have the ability to consider repair. So that's what you're asking, to have those conversations with our experts on staff.
And I think, you know, at the end of the day, if staff determines this is not really feasible to do, it makes more sense, you know, to demolish than that would move forward. We believe quite strongly, and we think, you know, we have a lot of evidence to suggest that there's a better alternative that we could work out.
Then you'd still have to come to us and have us approve it. But I would like a point of clarification, going back to Shannon, or Councilwoman Truxell's question was, it was not a year to shore up the front. The front, the shore of the stabilization was 60 days or give or take, once you're able to start it. And then that would eliminate our concern as a city from a safety standpoint.
That is correct. So from the moment that we start swinging hammers, so to speak, we feel like in 60 days, we can have the building completely stabilized, the safety situation neutralized, and be building public enthusiasm for a future development.
The sidewalk open, you know, the sidewalk at last. Just looking like, oh, something exciting is happening here.
Eliminating that headache.
I think, and I made it clear to you all, my stance on stopping staff from what their process is. And that, for me, is a commitment letter. Because if we stop our process for this project right now, there's no guarantees. The only guarantee that we have as a city that if we didn't put $1 into the stabilization, that it's all on Brennan. And I've seen too many projects in this community start out, and then they don't get to the end. So that's where, for me, I would want the city of Cape Girardeau to have a lone commitment for Phase 1, 2, and 3 of the program, of the project, before we change our direction whatsoever.
I don't think we're changing our direction, though. We're just authorizing staff to consider a change of direction. So we wouldn't, that would, I feel like that would come once they actually have a plan that's been vetted through staff as a viable plan. That's when we would say, okay, that's when we typically ask for it, correct?
Well, technically, yes. But I mean, I don't know how far our process is along. I mean, we have bids. How quick is that going to, how quick could we sign a letter of intent for Struck to start? I mean, so what I'm saying is, is I don't feel comfortable deviating from our current plan right now unless we have a lone commitment for Phase 1, 2, and 3 in our hands. We have already, no offense to company included, but we are already way far behind on this process, and it is drug and drug and drug. And I am not wanting to slow this down any further.
And see, I guess, I see it as, would it, this... I see it as, you know, that us, we wouldn't be halting the current process. We would potentially be delaying it, you know, however long that might be, a week or two or two weeks. Is it worth that delay to have a potential option that's going to save the taxpayers money and potentially salvage the building? Because we're not committing to it. We're just saying, hey, you know, and I guess that's my question to staff, is if we halt it, would that then make those bids null and void? Is there a lifeline or shelf life on them, or?
It seems to me that staff has already reached your conclusion on...
Well, right now, yeah. I mean, we received the final bids, actually two bids, on Friday. And we're reviewing those bids as we speak. We have to vet the numbers to make sure that they make sense and that all the specs that we require in demolition can be achieved with the requested dollar amount that's included. So the next step for us, quite frankly, is to bring the selected bid before the council for review and possible adoption. And that could come as soon as two weeks from now.
But Kenny, the council could then vote.
But it doesn't have to be two weeks.
One at a time, one at a time.
Well, can Brennan say something?
Yeah.
Yes, in response to that, yes.
Just to Robbie's point, we have a financial commitment letter.
Can I ask, can I, well, I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. In terms of, I mean, Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3, are you solely focused on Phase 1 right now?
Yeah, so because the forecasts for Phase 2 and Phase 3 are, of course, multiple months, if not years, down the road, I have a financial commitment in place that the bank is well aware of the entire phases, all three phases, and have interest in all three phases. Certainly have a commitment to Phase 1 to be completed. And obviously, that is what addresses the part of the building that is compromised and an eyesore. But as the building owner, once it's stabilized, it's obviously within my best interest to continue the development and proceed with that project.
Well, can I ask, just so we're clear on definitions, when you're talking about requesting the city to basically stabilize, you know, we have to understand, this is a structure that doesn't have a roof right now. And so when you say $125,000, $150,000, what exactly are you talking about?
So from my estimates of the building, that would include completely stabilizing the front brick facade and restoring the structural integrity, new windows, new storefront glass, new roof, where the building is completely dried in, sealed, and is prepared for then a build-out of those interior spaces.
So you, and you think the city can and should do that, and then we could accomplish that for $150,000?
I would be the one that would be responsible for accomplishing it for that dollar amount. That's just a projected amount that my estimates are that the stabilization of that front structure would cost.
For a roof and windows and wall stabilization?
That's correct. And it also includes...
Yeah, that's correct.
I would like to say I'm in favor of this project. Old Town Cape, many organizations come before us with verbiage. This organization have plans, they have stakeholders. I believe they contacted and spoke with every council member. They spoke with their constituents, they spoke with the community, those involved. He said he had a financial backing. And we, as a council, as a city, the first thing we say is economic impact, economic development. Someone presents a plan, we can do that. My number one thing, I'm in favor of Old Town Cape because they are doers, they are energizers, and they are ambassadors. They lead by example. Brandon Tote already has an example, Liz has an example. Dr. Hoffman revitalized probably Old Town Cape by himself on his back. I don't know what other resume, I don't know what other group of people that you would get to take an effort. They didn't say council has to vote on anything today. Could we potentially explore it? So if we are, as a council, as a city, want to move our city forward, they have the proof, they have the examples, they have the power behind them, and they have the team. Everybody else, when they talk, I got to ask them 50 billion questions. I want to know where the money going, which direction you want to go, how you want to do it, who's involved. You ask a lot of questions because you don't get the answers upfront. No one had questions for them. Now, do we have our own, what we think is important for the city? We keep saying economic development, economic growth. They presented it here, I'm highly in favor of it. I'm a liaison of Old Town Cape. And if anybody going to get it done to me in this capacity by proven example, and we can drive down the street and see many places in Cape, they revitalized the city more than any other area, unless it's residential. I could be wrong, but that's where I stand with that. So I would like the opportunity to explore that. If there's a council for that, they not asking us to make a decision. We can compare the two. When they talking about, they talking about long-term. Gillan talked about quality of life, this quality of life. So that's just my, that's where I stand on this project.
Picking back on that, is, you know, right on our point, is we talk a lot about our strategic partners and how we have to yield to them for their expertise. Not yield to them, but we have to lean on that expertise that they offer, that they focus in. And we have multiple different ones of those strategic partners here that we lean on that are vouching for this project. And I would like to go back. I mean, they're not asking for us to abandon our current path. In fact, I think I heard you say, you know, like, if the city decides it's in the city's best interest to tear it down, then tear it down, you know? But you're asking to be, not to abandon that, but to maybe potentially halt, you know, pause, but pause it for whatever time it takes for you to work with the city to figure out what that plan will look like to bring before us to decide on. Which, to me, because that then won't make those bids null and void. To me, it's worth doing. Because to me, I understand, like Liz said on the outset, there's a lot of impatience and a lot of frustration around this because it's been, you know... But at the same time, for 10 years, we, over 10 years, we've been yearning for a solution for this property. And so, you know, communities that flourish, you know, travel every weekend, thanks to children, volleyball, travel every weekend to different towns. And you see the communities that flourish, especially that have historic downtowns, are ones that don't tear down their iconic historic structures unless they absolutely have to. And unfortunately, we felt like we absolutely had to. And that's why we went down this path of demolition, because it became a safety concern, and we had to just tear it down. We couldn't find any takers. We, in the 11th hour, now have a, you know, what our strategic partners are telling me, are very promising, very viable plan that they endorse and they support and they sponsor. That should be seen as a blessing to me, that we have that win-win potential opportunity. If it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out. That's what they've said. But we have the potential opportunity to save this iconic structure, return it to all its glory, turn it into a property that won't just become a vacant lot with a $500,000 lien on it, that legal precedent, as far as what questions I've asked, would never be forgiven because there's no legal precedent to forgive that big of a lien, which then means the city's going to have to take it over, which then means we're going to have to put money into it, and we're going to have to maintain it into perpetuity. So the tax-efficient, you know, as a steward of the taxpayer dollars to be, yeah, let's look at what this option is and see if it's feasible. And let's allow staff to do it, which I know that's a decision to make. But just to save the taxpayer money on the front end, as well as into perpetuity, if we just end up going down the one train track that we're on right now, and that's the demolition train track. Because that, to me, is not a vibrant downtown. It's not reflective of a vibrant downtown community is having a vacant lot that has a huge lien on it that'll never be able to be sold. So I commend you guys for all the legwork you put into this and believing in this and not giving up. I feel like this isn't a hail mary in the last quarter. It's like, oh my God, we had this, right timing fell in the lap and proceed forward. And yeah, I agree with Councilwoman Randall. I mean, I'm very supportive of at least looking into this plan, you know?
What I would add is, I appreciate that you've put this much work into it. I come from a stance of seeing things started and then never finished. It's alarming to me that there is only a Phase 1 commitment from a bank when this is a long-term project, which is what you guys said. And currently, that's telling me you only have a commitment for $150,000 stabilization program. You said Phase 1 commitment. A commitment letter for the whole project, Phase 1, 2, and 3?
Phase 1 of the complete build-out of the front. So not the stabilization, but the actual build-out of those five units.
Which is, I don't, I didn't have the number, but...
Sorry.
Yeah, I didn't provide the number in the slide. But we have, all I can tell you is my track record with my current...
No, I understand that. I mean, it's no different than in a TIF. When we approved, when we approved the Marquette, we have a commitment letter in hand from the institution that is stating the entire project, and that's what it is. And that's my concern on this project. With the rising rate environment, where we've got prime at 7.75 and construction costs going up, I'm very concerned about it being able to make financial sense for anybody, quite frankly. And so that's where I, my comfort level, and I told you all, a commitment letter that I know that if we stop and we turn it over in any capacity, that I know that it will be completed all the way down to the end. Not just a stabilization, not just, it looks clean on the inside, and it's nothing on the inside or outside, and nothing on the inside, where it's completely done. And that's what I want to know that you've got in place.
Yes, and thank you, Robbie. I do respect what you're saying. My comment to that would be that I don't think I would ever come to you and say, in three years, I'm going to start a project, and I want you to commit right now. And you're a seasoned banker. But I have presented this to a bank, and we have a full commitment for Phase 1 with a commitment to move to Phase 2 once Phase 1 is stabilized, which is only reasonable.
Right, understand.
Of course, in completing the build-out of Phase 1, the part of the structure that is dilapidated, and no one's driving by the fly house and saying, boy, that fly house is sure an eyesore. But of course, the front of Broadway is certainly an issue. And it will not only have that completed, but we will be able to fully have it rented. And I anticipate that we will...
So that Phase 1 included the white box as far as, okay.
So the...
Because that's different from whenever I had seen this previous. Phase 1 was really just stabilization, and then the next piece was...
It's probably a lack of clarity in how we present it. So stabilization is like Phase 0. So the three-phase project begins after the stabilization is complete. So within 60 days, for between $125,000 and $150,000, Brennan can make all of those repairs, including the roof and the windows, and basically turn it into no longer a safety concern and ready for development. And then Phase 1 is the first phase of the development. And so then that would create three retail spaces and two... development. And so then that would create three retail spaces and two residential spaces in that front portion of the building. So basically, within a year, there would be, you know, rented or leased retail spaces and leased apartments. And then that would then springboard into, into, into phase two.
And then Brennan, is, is your proposal, and I think somebody asked earlier, and I wanna make, I wanna clarification, is it solely contingent on us, on the city of Cape reimbursing you stabilization?
Yeah, the stabilization portion of it is what makes it financially feasible.
So the only way this project, in your opinion, for you to do it is if we pay for the stabilization, reimburse you for stabilization?
For, for me to take on the project, the, some type of solution from the city regarding the stabilization of the property, that would be critical, yes.
However, I think, you know, I talked to Kenny about this, there might be a possibility of stipulating if the money is provided, that you would have to pay the money back if you don't proceed with the project.
Yeah. And I think those are all things that would be reasonably hashed out if approval was given for city staff to at least investigate the matter further. Because right now we can't figure out exactly what it'll be, you know, and what that it will even look like. If it's a planned development, like we have lots of planned developments with private enterprises across the city, whether and how, what shape that is, because that's fluid, or whether it's that purely transactional. Yeah, I don't, I don't know what that is. And that's why we have the, the expertise in the back of the room.
I commend you all for what you do. And I, I think it's an excellent project. And it would be less costly for us to proceed with this than to proceed with demolition, which is a key factor in my mind.
I have a serious concern about using our ARP funds for someone's personal gain in, in development. I, that's a serious concern.
We need to talk about the legalities of this because I, I, essentially what we're doing is giving a private developer city funds.
We're, we're doing that for demolition, though. Right. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and.
So the way this would work is under the condemnation ordinance, the city has the ability to demolish a condemned structure or repair it. So that's what we would do. If you're open to it, we could advertise for bids or just stabilizing, repairing the structure, just enough to stabilize it so that you don't have the, the falling wall and things like that. And then Brandon is a contractor, so he would be eligible to submit a bid for that, as would any other contractor, and would go through the normal bid process. And then the low bidder gets the award.
So, but again, that would include a roof.
Yes.
Walls.
Yes.
New windows.
Yeah, we'd have to work out the detail, but certainly stabilize the wall and roof. Those are absolutely.
A whole new exterior shell of, of the front part of this building.
Enough to stabilize.
And so I guess I'm asking, you're, you're telling us that can be accomplished for $150,000? Or you're telling us, no, we would, we would come back to you once we find what that number is. And in my mind, I can't imagine it not being way higher than $150,000, but
Yeah, we don't know what the cost would be to act, just to stabilize. Again, we'd have to work out the scope and go through the bid process and see what the bid is.
Well, we're calling it stabilization, but it's really complete remodel.
No, no.
It's, it is a roof that is non-existent.
And again, you gotta remember, the, the part that contributed to the condemnation is just that front part, okay? Which is a very small portion of the footprint of the building. So that's the only area where the roof is missing. Everything else is fully intact. The auditorium, the fly house, those roofs are fine. So we're just talking that small area, that one roof at the front of the building.
But the demolition bids that we're talking about getting are for the entire, entire structure, the entire, yep. Well, as Shannon mentioned, we do have ARPA funding that we have committed to the demolition of that entire building. I can't imagine we will ever be in a situation where we have that again. It's just something that we'll think about.
And I go back to, we're not asking to not demolish, to demolish it, but to investigate what it would look like to not demolish it.
This is where I'm confused, because I think we've been talking about this for a good six, eight months. And my understanding was that city staff has proceeded and we are now getting bids because city staff has essentially decided. You, you're asking city staff to go back and, and come up with a plan, but I, I thought we have.
They needed direction from council. We, we have the, yeah, they need the direction from council because they proceeded down the, the standard operating procedure. And so we have all the authority, you know, and prerogative to be stewards of the taxpayer dollars and put a halt on that. It's not looking like we expected. And maybe there's another, a better option. We can direct the staff to do so.
I have another question. So the bids coming in, so it's about 400, say it takes 300 to 400 thousand dollars to demolish. What does that leave in other processes of other homes or other areas in the city? Is there funding left over from that?
It wipes out the budget. You have no more condemnation funds for the rest of the fiscal year.
So how many?
In fact, you'd be going above that. You'd have to find more money in addition to what you have budgeted for condemnation for the whole city.
So this one building, if we demolish it, wipes out all funds in any area of the city?
We wouldn't be able to make any progress on any of the other condemned buildings for the rest of the fiscal year. Yeah, yeah, through, through the end of June.
How many, how many processes are in place to be condemned without utilizing those funds right now?
We, we probably got at least 15 to 20 buildings that need to come down.
So if we utilize these funds, those 15, 20 buildings can't come down, we have to wait till the next fiscal year?
They would be delayed till next year and it would depend on what budget you give us for that program.
Okay.
Yes. Through the, through the end of the fiscal year.
And, and I also go back to we're not committing to this at all with this decision. It's just all of these questions we're trying to hash out collectively in an open forum that everybody's loving their time here, spent here, but it's really what's gonna be hashed out working with city staff to figure out what does this actually look like, to then bring that to us and say, well, here's your option, A, or proceed with the, the demolition, create a vacant lot.
But we have to, as a council, give them that.
Give them that direction via consensus. Yeah, another business, just bring it up to consensus, kind of like we did with the FEMA plan, you know, a couple of meetings ago. So, yeah.
Can I ask, and, and Mr. Young, you might need to weigh in on this. I've been a little hung up on the, as, as we've discussed previously, on some of the, the legal issues and the, and the processes, the things that the city can do and can't do. I am concerned about a precedent. Now, knowing this building is, you know, just the, the scale of this is so much different than, than any other, I think, condemned property we have currently. It's a huge, huge project. So that, you know, that, that does create some, some difference. However, would this set us down a road then of the city being expected or requested, at the very least, to chip in on every other demolition project or condemnation project? I, I really kinda wanna hear the, any legalities of that. I suspect there aren't any, but, and then too, the issue of, does this, does this wade into a situation where a city is giving a, a developer money? That, that is just where I'm, not even specifically for this project, just in general, that's where I'm concerned.
Well, he just shared with us.
I'm asking, I'm asking, I'm asking.
I mean, how many times he gonna tell us, Mayor? He said, this is the law that we could either demolish or repair.
I'm asking the city attorney.
Do stabilization and we can get three bids.
Excuse me. I'm, I'm asking our city attorney.
How many, how many times do you need to hear it?
I'd like to hear it once from an attorney. Okay.
So council, similar to the project that was highlighted at the beginning of the presentation, the River and Rails project that was done pursuant to a redevelopment agreement between the city and Mr. Tote, the city could, if it chose to pursue a similar process to redevelop the Broadway Theater. So that would be the legal process.
I'm sorry.
In terms of, we could pursue a similar process as the city did for the River and Rails redevelopment, for a redevelopment process of the Broadway Theater project.
Sorry, I'm not familiar with exactly what the involvement you're referring to.
But the council, if you'll recall, approved a redevelopment agreement between the city and Mr. Tote for the redevelopment of the.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm just not remembering clearly. I, I remember it happened, but if.
Yeah. We get a redevelopment agreement to redevelop that and Mr. Tote redeveloped that pursuant to that agreement. And he will be receiving public funds pursuant to the TIF agreement that we entered.
Well, that was a TIF agreement.
Correct.
And so, I mean, is that part of this discussion? Or, or Mr. Tote, is that part of this? That was a TIF agreement. We have, we have numerous of ones of those happening. Is this different or is this the same?
This would be different, although we would be pursuing a TIF as well for, for the phase one through three. I, I cannot speak to much more than what my construction background lends me. And in my, in my walking through the, the entire theater, I had a team with me and we were taking precise measurements. I have, you know, using my software programs, I have estimated what it would take to replace the three storefronts, the eight windows. I happen to know a roofer, you know? It's kind of up my alley. So I don't wanna present something that seems unrealistic, but I do want you to know that I have done the research as to what it would take for me to stabilize that front section of the building. And I, I think it's, it's realistic within my grasp.
So, so your question on precedent, the question is, in future redevelopment agreements the city reaches in those similar type of processes, would the developers want in addition to the tax financing, would they want a direct financial contribution from the city for that redevelopment?
I would also like to add, there are, we obviously, as, as a Main Street organization, have access to resources across the entire country for what's happening with development projects. And as I had mentioned to you in the, in the past and some others as well, this is happening in, in other communities across the country, specifically even within our state. And I am more than happy, again, as I've offered before, to share specifics on what that looks like in Joplin, for instance, where a similar agreement and a partnership with the city took place.
I would, no, you go ahead. I was just saying, I, I don't wanna speak out of turn at all, but as I understand the verbiage saying, or repair, even if my proposal isn't selected and someone else has a better proposal, we, we understand that. I think we're, I'm just simply asking, is it possible for another option to be considered, whether it's mine or someone who brings something better?
I, I think where I'm, again, getting a little hung up and, and just since being on the council in the past four years, there've been a few of these big, you know, projects come, come before us to remodel these older structures. And it, it seems to me that, that the developer comes forward with, with all of these things already mapped out. I, maybe I'm, maybe some of us have, have dealt with it different, but already mapped out, already kind of just fully in place and, and, you know, all the, the, the legal issues and the, the financing, it's all, it's all kind of done. And, and you ask the, the city to become a partner in that. It, I think what's throwing me off on this is that it seems like we're, it's all, all of that fine detail is contingent upon the city agreeing to, to give, really, we don't even know how much yet, to you in a, in a cash situation to, to fund, you know, the kickstart of this project. That, that seems to me to be the, the big difference.
I think it's not contingent upon us giving.
Not contingent upon us giving the money, it's contingent, contingent upon them being able to have the conversation with the staff as to what that arrangement would look like. Because right now they're handcuffed, they can't proceed on that path. So they can't hash out a lot of those details because they don't know till they look at what tools are made available for them.
With all due respect on that, Nate, though, those conversations have happened.
But the, so with this, the, they cannot, according, you know, they have to be directed to pursue down not the non-condemnation path. And so for me, it's, it's a decision, it's the other, to go to your, you know, is the precedent, is this is a condemned structure that we've been trying to find a plan for, for 10 plus years. So, yeah, there's a precedent, there's not a precedent. So this is the new precedent. If there was an iconic historic structure that had sat vacant, that had sat for a plan for over 10 plus years on our main primary corridor of our downtown community, that we have a backing of a overwhelming amount of stakeholders and strategic partners, then yeah, maybe we'll follow this blueprint. I think maybe, you know, I feel like that would be a good, a good blueprint for us as stewards of the taxpayer dollars. Because to me, I, I wanna acknowledge absolute, you know, acknowledge the fact that right now, our current path, the result of it, will end up in a 300 to 500,000 dollar tax bill that will show up as a lien on a vacant property that is not gonna be marketable to sell to anybody. That I understand the legal precedent is, is not, there's not precedent to forgive a lien of that size and magnitude. So it'll be a vacant lot in our primary downtown, as opposed to potentially just entertaining the idea of someone who has a plan that came forward, a, a proven business owner and employer in our town coming forward, wanting to invest in our community, his own dollars and time and skills and has the passion, as opposed to seeing it turn into a vacant parking lot with a huge tax lien on it. You know, that's, to me, give him a shot, you know? That's what, that, why not? We can still go down the, you can't put the toothpaste back in the tube. If we tear down the building, there's no coming back and saying, hey, let's revitalize that, that, that theater, as opposed to, hey, let's look at revitalizing the theater. If it doesn't work, we can still tear it down.
Well, and with all due respect, and, I mean, I, I, I do think I know where you're coming from, but you're, but you're saying, give it, give him a shot with $150,000 or more of city money.
I don't know what that looks like. I wanna see what it looks like so that I can make that vote on it at that time. Because we don't know, but we're trying to hash it out right now with legal counsel and others and staff up here, as opposed to letting them do their job, their day-to-day jobs and figure this out.
I, I'd just like to say that, you know, one of the things you can look at, it didn't happen this way, but years ago, when I was covering state council, one of the council, they spent a lot of time discussing tearing down the old Marquette Hotel. And the only reason it wasn't torn down was because the city would have had to spend a huge amount of money. I argue that if ARPA funds had been available at that time, that building probably would have been torn down. And now look what a contribution it is to our community. So I think you, you have to, you know, look at that too.
It's not, it's not a perfect comparison because I don't, I don't believe the city gave those developers a big chunk of cash. That, that's where I'm.
And we're not giving them a big chunk of cash right now. We're looking at.
Nobody's getting any, any cash unless it's through TIF. This, again, the stabilization is.
Actually, the demolition contractors are gonna get a big chunk of cash if we go down the demo process.
Instead of demolition, we're going to do bids for the stabilization and then we would spend money on the stabilization on it, which is.
Rebuilding the building. It's, it's.
According to Brandon, 125 to 150,000 dollars for stabilization is what, I'm assuming, Ryan, our request for proposal that would go out to the public would be for stabilization of the building, correct? And then at, at that given time, so we're, we're out that, that money at that point, and then the foundation still owns the property, sells it to him, and then you got.
Yeah, that's, that's why you'd have to have an agreement, like Gregory was mentioning. All this is locked in through an agreement before anything, anyone proceeds with anything.
That's what I was saying. You could, you could say in the agreement, if you don't proceed with this, all that money that this has to be returned to the city, city would not be out anything at that point.
Except, except that the Broadway Theater is going to allow him to acquire the theater. He doesn't own the theater at this point. So again, it's still, you're still providing an avenue for someone who's involved in the renovation to acquire it at that, with the, with the funds from the city government. So I, I am all for this whole project without us injecting hundreds of thousands of dollars if it can be accomplished. And I understand Robbie's concern, especially from a banking standpoint. At this point, we're not getting anywhere with the discussion. I, I would like to just decide whether or not we're gonna allow them to go back to staff to inquire about.
Let's, if somebody wants to take that up under, under new business later today, we can do that. Any other points you all would like to wrap up with? Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you.
All right, we will move into communications reports from the council.
Well, congratulations, CMO Basketball. Segue, slightly more delightful conversation. First time in 23 years.
First time in 23 years, CMO Basketball is going into March Madness. I just wanted to just give a plug, please everybody pay attention. That is an incredible accomplishment and congratulations to all the athletes, everybody involved at the Athletics Department at Southeast. That is a huge feat. So let's just send good vibes to them going as far into March Madness as possible. So, yeah, congratulations, CMO Basketball. That's it.
I would just like to thank the Cape Girardeau Police Department and the other officers involved in making the arrests in the recent shooting, isn't it, hotshots. We have some incredible officers who do incredible work. And just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
I just also wanted to echo the same sentiments. I actually was listening to the scanner that night when all that took place and everyone was so professional, calm, cooperation between Cape Fire and Cape Police and even members in the community, people that actually live just blocks away from there, how they offered all their assistance and everything they witnessed. So thank you to all of our police and fire and our major case squad. Thank you.
I had two things that I had the pleasure of attending, and one of them, Rob mentioned earlier. And that was the first ever that I know, you know, first in a long time, Hill Day, organized by the Cape and Jackson Chambers and Scott City Chambers to Jefferson City. And I've been involved in Hill Days, organizing them, leading them, participating in them for over 20 years. And so it's, it's very encouraging to me to see our actual, our leadership around this community going up. And it's a good first step, a foot in the door, so that we can build on this. And it becomes a habit so that we can have those relationships and advocate for us down here in Southeast Missouri and helping us flourish down here. So thank you to Rob and to all the chambers for organizing that. That was huge. The second thing that I got to participate in or attend was, you know, they had a groundbreaking several months ago and then now they had the open house for the new Crisis Intervention Center, operated through Community Counseling Center but located at Gibson Recovery Center. And what an amazing asset that's going to be for those people that need it most, that's most important, but also for our police force and our, and our public safety folks. So they have an outlet for somewhere to take these individuals to receive the care that they need. So kudos to the community, to the state, to those two organizations for having the leadership and vision to, to put that into place.
Well, I'll echo Nate's comments just regarding the Regional Advocacy Day last week. Mr. Gilligan mentioned it earlier. It is the first of what we hope are many annual days like that. And, and I was especially encouraged by the response of our, our state people up there, who all, three, four, five people all said, we need you all to come do this. We, we want to have a better relationship. And, you know, when you look at the map of Missouri, Southeast Missouri has, has not, for perhaps a variety of reasons, had that, that coordinated representation that other parts of our state do. So I'm, I'm very excited to see, you know, what's going to transpire from all that. So thank you, Mr. Gilligan, again, for putting all that together. Anything else from council? All right. We have several items for discussion. One, is there anyone who, in the audience, who wishes to appear as an advisory board applicant? If so, please come up and state your name and tell us all about you. No? All right, seeing none. We have a consent agenda review. Dr. Haskin.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We have several LNI agreements for your consideration and hopefully adoption tonight. The first is number seven. This LNI agreement allows John C. Jones Trust Agreement to install and maintain a self-supporting aluminum canopy in the right-of-way adjacent to 100 South Sprig. Number eight, another LNI agreement with Macmahan Properties for installation of an awning in the right-of-way adjacent to 108, 110 South Sprig as well. Number nine, an LNI agreement with Little Mac for a water quality unit within the right-of-way of Brownstone Drive. Number 10, a supplemental agreement with Burns and McDonald Engineering Company for the new terminal project and construction of the 26 new tee hangers. And of course, number 11, we're ready to accept the Little Mac East Third Subdivision improvements along that right-of-way. That would conclude the consent agenda, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. We'll move into regular session. Mr. Taylor, do you have a roll call?
Mark Bliss.
Here.
Robbie Guard.
Here.
Stacy Kinder.
Here.
Dan Preston.
Here.
Tamika Randall.
Here.
Nate Thomas.
Here.
Shannon Truxell.
Here.
All right, council, we have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second, Mr. Preston. Ms. Randall, any discussion? All in favor of the agenda, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Agenda carries. We have three public hearings tonight. First, I will open the public hearing to consider a request to rezone property located at 2403 South Sprig Street from M2 Heavy Manufacturing Industrial District to AG Agricultural District. Is there anyone here to speak to that public hearing? All right, seeing none, I will close that public hearing. The second public hearing is to consider a request for a special use permit for long-term use of a shipping container at 3439 Williams Street. Is there anyone here to speak to that? Yes, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Brian Sherman. I represent Walmart Stores Incorporated. We are asking for a special permit to locate a storage container on the supercenter lot at 3439 Williams. This container, we have drawings that have been submitted to the city to be reviewed from Benchmark. And they had a meeting and from my understanding, everything went pretty, pretty well on that. The container will be stored behind the building out of plain sight. It'll be enclosed on three sides. The container will be painted to match the building. So that's what we're asking. We're, we're asking this to be able to provide parts to our stores to maintain them and keep the product that we serve at a better temperature and maintain it for our customers. So, any questions?
No, very none. Thank you. All right, any other comments on that? All right, hearing none, I will close that public hearing. Third, we have a public hearing on the fiscal year 2023 through 2028 capital improvements program. Is there anyone here to speak to that? That should, is that a typo? Should that be? I thought it was a 10-year. Is it stated further down on the? Nope, I'm wrong. Anyone here to speak to that? Hearing none, I will close that public hearing then. We have a consent agenda before us. Mr. Young, would you read that, please?
Bill 2324, ordinance approving the record plat of Little Mac East Third Subdivision. Bill 2324, ordinance approving the record plat of Little Mac East Third Subdivision. Bill 2325, ordinance authorizes city manager to execute a supplemental agreement with the Missouri Department of Transportation for the King's Highway and Cape Rock Drive Sidewalk Project in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2325, an ordinance authorizing city manager to execute a supplemental agreement with the Missouri Department of Transportation, the King's Highway and Cape Rock Drive Sidewalk Project in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2326, resolution authorizing city manager to execute a licensed DMT agreement for installation of an awning in the right-of-way adjacent to 100 South Sprig Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2327, resolution authorizing city manager to execute a licensed DMT agreement for installation of an awning in the right-of-way adjacent to 108 and 110 South Sprig Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2328, resolution authorizing city manager to execute a licensed DMT agreement for installation of a water, water quality unit within the right-of-way of Brownstone Drive in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2329, resolution authorizing city manager to execute a supplemental agreement with Burns and McDonald Engineering Company, Inc., for the new terminal building project at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport.
All right, council, we have a consent agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Guard, Mr. Preston, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor then, please, of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That agenda carries. We have some new ordinances tonight. We will have staff members discuss them and then if there's anyone from the audience who wishes to ask a question or make a point, you may do so then and then the council will take up the issue. First is Bill 2330, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by changing the zoning of property located at 2403 South Sprig Street in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri from M2 to AG. It's the first reading. Mr. Shrimble.
Well, good evening. This particular property has a dairy farm. I'm not sure how it got rezoned to M2. I think it was done as part of the adoption of the new zoning code and zoning map in 2010. I wasn't here for that, but as you're aware, that area does have a lot of heavy industry. So I guess at the time, the city envisioned that that property would, that that farm would go away and it would be replaced or available for heavy industry, which certainly long-term, that, that is the likely scenario. But for now, the, the farm is very much alive and in operation. They have a milk storage tank they need to replace. The building won't fit, the existing building won't fit over the tank. So they need to replace the tank and the building. And right now, the, the farm is a non-conforming use. So they can't expand a non-conforming use under the code. So they're seeking to rezone it to agricultural to match the current use of the property. Some point then, if the, the farm goes away, you know, then they, they could look at rezoning it to M2 again.
This is why when you're down there watching soccer games, you catch the, the whiff of them. Okay, it all makes sense then. Now I get it. All right. I've always wondered. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to speak to this? Okay, hearing none. Council, is there a motion to approve Bill?
Second.
Mr. Preston, any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor then of Bill 2330, please say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill 2331, an ordinance granting a special use permit to Walmart Real Estate Business Trust for the purposes of placing, using and maintaining a shipping container at 3439 Williams Street in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading, Mr. Shrimble.
The gentleman who just spoke, I think, pretty much explained that Walmart wants to have a parts warehouse in a shipping container behind the store. And so that requires a special use permit because they want to use it for an indefinite period of time. Long-term use of a shipping container requires a special use permit.
Is there anyone else from the audience who wishes to speak? If so, you may come forward and please give your name and, and you have three minutes. What the parts they want to store in it?
Refrigeration service parts.
Ma'am, if you're, if you're going to, you need to come to the podium, I'm sorry.
Refrigeration gas, like the coolant or something?
No, it's going to be parts, some fixed equipment, something that will exist in the store.
So it'll be extra storage for parts and stuff? Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks. Anyone else from the audience who wish, has a concern? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Guard, Mr. Preston, council? Any questions, comments? Hearing none then, all in favor of Bill number 2331, please say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill 2332, an ordinance approving the record plat of Bertrand Subdivision. First reading.
Okay, this is a subdivision plat to just combine several tracks into one. Mr. Bertrand owns a single-family home that backs up to the land surrounding the, the Meadowbrook Water Tank. He acquired that property several years ago. He wants to build an accessory structure and because of the way the code reads, he has to make it on one lot. So he's submitted a subdivision plat for that purpose.
Okay. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to speak to this? Hearing none then, council, is there a motion to approve 3232? Thank you. Mr. Thomas? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Preston. Now, Mr. Guard, do you have a negative comment?
Due to some reasons, I'm sure.
Yeah, okay. And let the record show that Mr. Guard does know Mr. Bertrand quite well, so. Did you bet, did you make a bet that you would deny his? Is this a joke? Okay. All right. Any other comments? Hearing none then, all in favor of Bill 2332, please say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill 2333, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of temporary construction easements and permanent drainage easements from various property owners for the Sherwood Drive, Hood Drive, Brookwood Drive Drainage Improvements Project in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading. Mr. Pulli.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Dr. Haskin. This ordinance allows for two new street corridors and box corridors. This allows improvement of drainage projects in the Lisa Basin watershed. It'll improve it.
Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to speak on this? All right, so hearing none. Is, council, is there a motion to approve Bill?
So moved.
Who got the first, I'm sorry? Shannon and Mark. Discussion. Mr. Pulli, this is part of the PRS 2, correct?
Yes, ma'am, it is. This is PRS 2 through the Parks and Recreational Stormwater Phase 2. And like I said, this is a draining improvement project that was approved by the tax voters back in 2018.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none then, is there a motion to approve Bill 2333? Mr. Preston, oh, yes. We already did that.
Yep.
I'm sorry. All in favor of Bill 2333, please say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that carries. Bill 2334, an ordinance accepting a collector's deed from Cape Girardeau County for property located at 416 Second Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading, Mr. Pulli.
This ordinance allows us, this bought from tax sales, bought back in 2021. This is going to, land will be used for a future park down in Red Star District.
Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to speak to this? Sure, yes. A little more detail?
This was a tax sale for 416 Second Street that joins to a tract of land already owned by the city of Cape. All right, it's in the Red Star District that's known in the city of Cape. Collector's deed has been prepared for this purpose and is attached along with a location map. So this is what we're purchasing the land, so it's for a future park down that area.
You need to come forward and, and do it, yeah. We, we can't yell back and forth. Please come to the microphone and state, state your name for the record and.
Hi, I'm Lucy Green, and I was wanting to know if that properties I'm talking about is collector's deed, is it done through a foreclosure on people? And if it was, how was it foreclosed on? Like the details of the foreclosure? And if it was because it unpaid taxes for two years, is that how they acquired it? Or more details on it?
Thank you, Ms. Green. Mr. Pulli, do you have that information or?
Okay, I'll go through the costs and everything if you would like. The cost of the city of the land was $106 for the back taxes and plus $175 for the title search and $35.99 in recording fees for this property itself.
And this is a bunch, part of a bunch of properties that are in the floodplain, correct?
Yes, it is. This is a floodplain property that we purchased. We own land around it, so we are purchasing this so we have more land, so a future, a future park can be placed in that area.
Council, is there a motion to approve Bill 2334?
Second.
Mr. Preston. Truxell, is there any further discussion by council?
I'll talk after, we'll, I'll tell you how the whole process works after the end of the meeting.
It's in Mr. Preston's ward.
Yeah, this is, this is right there in the heart of my ward.
Council, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none then. All in favor of Bill 2334, please say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill 2335, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a special warranty deed to Vernon Rhodes Family Partners, LLLP, for property along the right-of-way located at 2110 Southern Expressway in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading.
The ordinance allows to convey excess property on Southern Expressway right-of-way located at 2110 Southern Expressway, Cape Girardeau, to Vernon Rhodes Family Partners, LLLP. This is a right-of-way that is, that we own. There's too much property there. We do not need it. We sell the property.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to speak to this issue? All right, seeing, do you have a question, ma'am? Oh, well, it. Oh, well, it, I'm sorry, Mr. Pullley.
It is a right-of-way along the roadway. It is no longer needed by the city because it's excess property. This is property the city no longer needs because it's a right-of-way. So, the city is selling the property so, because we no longer need it or have vested interest in that small amount of property. It is being sold to Vernon Roads Family Partners, LLLP.
The neighboring property owner.
I tell you what, and all of these things are, our agenda for city council meetings is put forward on our city website several days before our meetings, and if you will go there and look at our agenda, you can dig in to every single one of these bits and pieces of our meetings. All the ordinances, the maps that go along with them, the background information and all that, just for future meetings, if you're, you know, really wanting to, you know, to dig into all the details, they are there. And that was always set on Friday, Friday before a Monday meeting, basically, is when you can kind of start really seeing all the details. But this is being sold to a property owner with property in the area, so. Council, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Bliss, Mr. Thomas, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor then of Bill 2335, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. We have two appointments to make tonight. There were two, two spots open for the Golf Course Advisory Board, and Council, you have selected Cindy Gannon and Brad Wittenborn for those positions. Is there a motion to approve those two?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor then of selecting Cindy Gannon and Brad Wittenborn to the Golf Course Advisory Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries. And then, secondly, we had one appointment to the Town Plaza Community Improvement District Board of Directors. The request was for Lindell Reynolds to fill that vacancy. Is there a motion to approve Lindell Reynolds for that?
So moved.
Second, Presson? Truxell? Any discussion? All in favor then of Lindell Reynolds, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. We now come to other business for the board, and this is a time when, when we can hear from the audience or council members on items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to bring something up to the council, you have, if a member of the audience would have needed to pre-register, I've got several names here of people who have done that, you would have three minutes. It is not a time when the council can respond to audience members, so just please know that. Sorry, that's weird, but that's the way it is. So, under other business, I'll ask first, Council, is there somebody who wishes to bring up an item?
I'd like to bring up an item.
Okay.
Oh, do we not have any, are we going to handle this first, or are we doing the audience?
Let's go ahead, let's do this first.
Okay, I would, I would just like to continue the conversation that we had, we had ad nauseam earlier, you know, as a, as a probably, you know, probably the most fiscal conservative person up here, as a lifelong fiscal conservative, you know, where the city is getting ready to write a big hefty check to a private contractor to tear down a building for another private entity, to then have a vacant lot that we are not going to be able to market on the middle of our town versus even giving the, just giving the direction to staff to potentially investigate options that we may have to potentially save this building, this property, and not have to write that hefty check, and then have a usable property in perpetuity that is redeveloped that could be a huge asset to our community. I would just like to, I mean, we're not committing to it, we're just saying, hey, staff, work with them, come to us with a plan, and we'll go with it. And we're not halting the other process because low and behold, you know, like if this doesn't work out, or it's not tenable by the council, then we can always just go ahead. But I, as a steward of the taxpayer dollars, want to know, hey, what options do we have since we have someone who's very interested? And like I said earlier, we have for over a decade been looking for an opportunity for this, and now we have one, and now we're going to be so rigid within the confines of our process to not be able to think innovatively, to be a good use of taxpayer dollars to potentially salvage this once-in-a-lifetime property in a once-in-a-lifetime predicament that we are only interested in because it had a safety issue, so.
Okay, are you?
I would like to see, I don't think we need to have a motion. I guess we have to have a vote to see if there's a consensus of council members that would want to, yeah, so I'd take a motion to determine if we have a consensus of council members to direct staff to work with the entities that presented earlier to present a plan to us.
I second.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to clarify, we are in a demo process. Are you also suggesting we stop that?
We are in an, we have been in an RFP process for a demolition project, which I know is not, I don't know if we're under the constraints of a timeline. I know we've been in RFP processes. I mean, the heck, the city hall, we strung out for months, so, I mean, we can pause it for a little bit, so.
I had to check with Casey because I'm not as familiar with this process, but she believes that the bids are good for 60 days, so within that time period, we would either need to award the contract or reject all bids. So, 60 days.
Okay, so, Nate, your proposal is to ask staff to look into what's being offered or the concept by Mr. Tuck?
To develop a plan to then present to us for.
And Tamika, that's what you understood? Do you second that?
Yes, I second.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Okay. All in favor then of that proposal, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Bliss? These three? All, anyone opposed? The rest of us? Okay, so that motion carries, four to three. So, staff will communicate further with this group. From the audience is Ms. Cynthia Durgan here tonight. Ms. Lisa Green, do you have something else to come forward on? You don't have to, but your name is here, so I.
I'm Lucy Green, and I was going to prepare an edgy, gentle speech, but something happened out of my control.
Okay.
As you know, I was foreclosed illegally out of my house, so I was staying with someone else, and I got thrown out there, and I've been sleeping in my car for two days now because I don't have a place to live, so I didn't get prepared enough to speak. So, I'm sorry, I didn't want to not come here just because of what happened to me the last couple of days, but I don't want to be.
We're going to, we're going to bump you to the next meeting. No problem.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, you're struggling.
It's going to be all right.
Okay. And lastly, Mr. Andrew Ostrowski, is he here? Yes. If you would, please state your name and address.
Sure. Andrew Ostrowski, 31131, Winterfield Circle. Okay, what I would like to city council consider is placing on a ballot to amend the city charter, which was set a minimum for mayor at 150 and the council members at 100 a month, with the option for citizens or citizens of Cape Girardeau to petition to place on a ballot a higher rate compensation for city council members and/or mayor. And also, I support what's going on with Broadway dimensionally, destroying it goes against the grain of what I'm trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, that concludes our other business, and the meeting, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mr. Guard, Ms. Randall, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we adjourned. Thank you all very much for your attendance.